It's getting better every day. There are discoveries that come up every now and then.
I like a new.
I have my own.
The independent school board, school district 535, school board is called to order at 5:00 PM, Tuesday, October 11th, 2022, in room 137 of the Edison Building. This board acknowledges this site and all our PS sites are situated on the ancestral land of the Dakota people, and we honor the Dakota nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. Interested members of the public are welcome and encouraged to view this meeting remotely at youtube.com/isc535, where the live stream video may be found. Present at this meeting are school board members, superintendent Ted Patel, a non-boarding exhibition member, and in the absence of Assistant Board Clerk, Ms. Michelle Seaberson, I'd ask Board Clerk Barlow to please call the roll.
Director Edmondson.
Here.
Clerk Barlow here. Director Garcia.
Here.
Treasurer McLaughlin.
Here.
Chair Marvin.
Here.
Vice Chair Nathan.
Here.
And Director Workman.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Barlow. At this time, we offer the opportunity to say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. 2.01, approve the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Please, please.
If you're looking forward to approve the agenda, I'll simply say aye.
Aye.
All right. Agenda is approved. This evening, we have three topics we're going to be studying. The first one, 3.01, strategic plan, system level, goals, measures, and improvement targets planning. Dr.
Thank you, Dr. Marvin and board members. We actually are starting a really important discussion more than a month early. And so tonight, we are presenting you with, for feedback and discussion, a draft of an improvement framework for our district tied to our strategic plan. On November 15th, we will bring a revised version of this framework back to you as part of our request that you approve a world's best workforce framework as required by state statute. As board members are aware, the world's best workforce requirement gives us a framework that is open-ended insofar as we can put the indicators in that this school board chooses to focus on, but it also gives us a lot of flexibility. So we are starting tonight with a recommendation for the monitoring and improvement agenda for our strategic plan. We will, over the next month, take this framework and fit it into the structures that's required for both world's best workforce and other requirements. And so we have got some time for reflection and dialogue before we actually are going to be asking you for a vote that goes in world's best workforce. So I want to thank Dr. Peter Ruck, who spent a lot of time with me in putting what is really a pretty innovative proposal together. I'm gonna give a brief presentation to try as best I can to synthesize what's before us, but I want to really encourage Peter to jump in and dialogue with board members and also all the cabinet members as well, because this is very much a work in progress. So with that, we have got a PowerPoint and the technology is even working. What a difference a year makes. One year ago, in this aspect of our work, which I would call the continuous improvement aspect of our work, we didn't have a strategic plan that was based upon both research and evidence and very extensive stakeholder input. We did not have Peter or the other capacity that we've built to use research and evidence and data, and there's a lot more happening than Peter, but that's a big deal. We did not have a school improvement planning process that was both reflective of the research on school improvement and frankly, getting attention in our schools. We did not have, and we do not yet have, but we will have by summer, a connection between our school improvement plans, our budgets, and our staffing plans. We are merging those processes so that in the future, improvement plans at the school and district level are developed concurrent with staffing and budget plans rather than after them, as has been the case both here and in many districts. We did not have an organizational structure, and these are, I should make clear, these points are my perspective, that set us up for coherence, which is everything in improvement. What we say here in this room ultimately only matters if, at the appropriate level, it makes it to a classroom on a Tuesday in a way that a teacher or an education support professional can make sense of it in their work. We were largely focusing on the improvement areas that were required by that state legislation I mentioned a moment ago, world's best workforce, as opposed to the priorities of our own strategic plan. And we, as board members will really remember, or at least I do vividly, we were setting improvement targets that really were arbitrary. We set a 2% improvement target last year, just 2% better on everything, because we were not positioned at the time to have a more substantive approach. So I've obviously leaned in with kind of an edge on all of these points, but I think when both board members and staff are working as hard as we've all been working and doing all of this in the midst of a pandemic and many other issues going on, it's worth taking a pause and looking at the amount of progress we've made in a year. That said, this is the beginning of a continuing journey to really come up with a framework that is really going to inform improvement at the classroom, school, and district levels. So where we are today is bringing you an initial set of improvement indicators, and they are summarized, we managed to get it in one page, on this one pager that you have there and that people can access in the PowerPoint on board docs, and that we'll also make available in a PDF. You can see that there are four categories of indicators that we're proposing. There are academic indicators, social-emotional indicators, learning environment indicators, and work environment indicators. And I'll just touch on them very briefly, and then we'll look at the approach we suggest taking to improvement, and then a few issues that I want to flag for you for our discussion today and over the next month. With the academic indicators, we have what is a really very high-quality, early assessment of essentially readiness for learning, the TS Gold assessments that we have got, that we're utilizing to assess readiness for school in the social-emotional, physical, cognitive, linguistic literacy, and mathematics realms. We have got a new, for many of our schools, familiar for a handful, frequent assessment called FastBridge that is a brief assessment that is a powerful screener and a diagnostic tool in reading and mathematics that we're proposing. We use at three benchmark points from K-8. And we have a proposal here for the Minnesota comprehensive assessments, which would focus on moving students out of the lowest level of the MCAs, and board members may want to come back and talk about that. That is the level in the state test specifications that the state of Minnesota specifies as lacking foundational knowledge and skills. We and almost every other district in Minnesota have a struggle with the MCAs. They are required. They are not intended to be instructionally useful. They come back to you long after the kids have left your class, but they are a measure of system performance. So what Peter and I are recommending is that while we certainly would continue to administer the tests as required, collect the data as required, our improvement priority would be to move those students who are at Level 1 up to Level 2, essentially from "does not meet" to "partially meets." Both are below the proficiency mark that usually makes the papers and gets the attention, but obviously, if you're moving a large share of your students from "does not meet" to "partially meets," you are moving the whole system up. But that's an important discussion for us to have. Then you'll see at the high school level, we're proposing that we emphasize the pre-ACT, which would be a new assessment if we do move into that. We have strong support from our high school administrators on that. We'd give it likely in 9th grade as a diagnostic, and then of course, the ACT, which we give to all of our upper-class people. And then, of course, an emphasis, as our strategic plan calls for, on readiness for post-secondary education, with post-secondary credit earning while in high school, high school graduation, enrollment in a post-secondary institution after high school, and then also earning a living wage, which we have in our improvement framework. It's actually a change from when this one pager was printed a couple of weeks ago. And then finally, the students who go to a post-secondary institution and need to take what is now usually called a developmental class, formerly called a remedial class, essentially taking a high school-level class at RCTC or University of Minnesota Rochester or any other institution. So those would be our academic indicators. Our social-emotional indicators, we focused on two social-emotional competencies that are very important from the research and that emerged as important through our strategic planning process, emotion regulation, and social awareness. They also, we have good measures of those two. There are many others that frankly also emerged, like empathy, but we didn't have good measures of some of the ones, so we didn't include things we don't have good measures of. Then our third category is the learning environment. How are kids experiencing our schools as places to thrive academically? And you see there, we're proposing to emphasize measures of classroom engagement, teaching effectiveness, the survey calls it pedagogical effectiveness, teacher-student relationships, school belonging, and school safety, and then of course, reducing disciplinary infractions and disparities in disciplinary infractions. And then finally, a set of indicators for the work environment for our staff. How well do our staff feel they belong? Do they feel that they are culturally aware and taking culturally meaningful action to benefit students? Measures of school climate, their relationships with leadership, and their assessment of school leadership. And then finally, we would also be including in our measures, how are we doing demographically with staff and staff year-to-year retention rates? Those last two, we did not put on this, the framework for improvement for tonight, because frankly, we need to do some more analysis of how actually specifically we'd measure them, but we will bring them back to you at another point. So those would be the measures. I know that's a lot, and I'm moving quickly. How would we set targets for improvement? How would we know we're improving? And this is where we're proposing something that is somewhat different than the way we've done it here in the past and that frankly, in my experience, every other school district has done it since the No Child Left Behind era. Normally, what happens is you come up with an aspirational goal, and then you somehow set equal increments of progress toward that goal, regardless of the fact that nobody may have ever hit that aspirational goal, and nobody ever may have made those incremental improvements toward the goal. In fact, almost without exception, they haven't. And yet, for 20 years in American education, we've set these goals that no one's achieved and called for progress that nobody has made. And so what we're suggesting is that we base this on statistical significance. And Peter put together a really good plain language definition of what that means. I'm going to invite board members to dialogue with him about that in a moment. But essentially, statistical significance is very, is using the data set in such a way as we can be very sure that the change, if any change happened, is unlikely to have been random chance. It's unlikely to have been influenced by the random composition of the kids that day, or by what someone said in the hallway, or by someone not having breakfast, because there's so many kids that made the change, and the change was significant enough that if we gave the test again tomorrow, it's unlikely that they would be a point or two up or down. So we can come back to that. But if you look, and you got many of those indicators in your packet over the weekend, and thank you for Director Nathan for catching my error from "statically," which should have been "statistically," it didn't show up as a mistake because it's a word. If you follow the arrows here, you can see the methodology, and this plays out identically across all of the indicators that you have in your packet. There is an aspirational goal that is one of those goals that probably almost nobody, if anyone, has achieved, but we think those are still important to set, to have them as a vision for all of our students. And you can see them in all of those indicators. In this one, there's a goal of 85% of students report a high level of social awareness on the Panorama survey. So each of these has that aspirational, or what we might call, long-term goal. The second piece is what are each of these indicators? I'm not going to go through all, I believe there's 30 on your report, but here's the measure of the Panorama survey. And you can see what happens, and I'm not going to try and read all of them. The students, and this is the grade 6 through 12 version, the students answer a series of questions, and all of these, these what we call a scale, have been validated by the survey developers to be both valid and reliable. They measure what we're actually trying to measure, and if you gave the survey again, they would measure it reliably more than once. So here you can see in this particular instance, what the survey's trying to get at is, how carefully do students listen to other people's points of view? How much do the students feel they care about other people's feelings? How often do they compliment others' accomplishments? How well do they get along with students who are different from them? How clearly were you able to describe your feelings? What others disagreed with you? How respectful were you of your views? To what extent were you able to stand up for yourself without putting others down? To what extent were you able to disagree with others without starting an argument? So students answer those in one of those scales, and we actually get a percentage. And I'm going to put Peter on the spot without much prompting. Where were we with Panorama on the social awareness scale last year, if you can?
Well, it's funny that you should ask that, because I pulled up the Panorama social awareness. The grades 3 to 5, our social awareness was 64% of students would have met that threshold. And in grades 6 through 12, it was 61%.
Okay. So there you have what would be, if we adopt this approach, a baseline, which would be, we're proposing, and I'll come back to this in a minute, not last year's administration, but this year's, and I'll explain that in a moment. So we'd have a baseline, and this would be true not just for like the Panorama survey, but for graduation rates, student achievement, all the indicators. The target for improvement would be statistically significant gain over the baseline, such that we know that that improvement, if we make that improvement, was unlikely to be due to chance, but was likely due to an actual increase in students' social awareness. Then we would, of course, get our result. And with the Panorama survey, we are proposing to move to fall to fall as opposed to fall to spring. In a nutshell, when you're giving survey items that are mostly based on perceptions and feelings, kids feel very different about school in the fall and the spring. And so when you're giving it in the fall and the spring, you're actually measuring apples and oranges and not apples and apples. So we would have a fall 2023 result. We would actually look at that result, and then our goal for fall 2024 becomes statistically significant improvement over fall 2023. Then we find out what our result is in fall 2024, and as you can, of course, follow along, the fall 2025 target becomes statistically significant improvement over fall 2024. And by fall 2025, we are at the end of our current strategic plan journey. So a few points for consideration and discussion, and then I'm going to kind of first invite Peter if he has any things he either wants to add or correct, and then we can move Madam Chair to the discussion, however you want to structure it. The first is that, as I said earlier, focusing on statistically significant change would be very different from making incremental progress toward goals that no school, or I would say district, has likely achieved. And I'm being very forward-leaning in that because you can tell I have, I've lived that journey, and it's like being on a proverbial, you know, wheel that you're never actually getting ahead on because you're setting goals that are just not based upon serious improvement. Second, and this is important for board members to know as we go into this, if on a given year, we have too few kids complete the survey, or too few kids take the test, or we have a data issue with the post-secondary institutions that can't tell us how many kids enrolled or took developmental courses, we would not be able to calculate statistical significance. We think all the indicators we've shown here are very stable, so that's unlikely, but I wouldn't want board members a year or two from now to see an asterisk on one box in our improvement framework that says not, can't calculate statistical significance. You have to have enough kids and good enough data to calculate, to make that calculation. Number three, so why not focus on those, you know, improvement goals just towards sort of aspirational goals? And this is one that, as Peter and I were dialoguing about this, it's a little risky for me to say, because schools and districts, we know from the research, do influence student outcomes. They meaningfully and importantly influence student outcomes. They do not single-handedly determine student outcomes. There's a longstanding debate, starting back with a very influential report called the Coleman Report in the 60s, that basically said schools don't matter at all, and everything is determined by family characteristics, which subsequent research has shown to not be true. But there's a lot of debate about exactly how much do schools and districts control, given that we have kids, as we often point out, 15% of their lives between kindergarten and high school, and there are many other factors that matter. When you set those goals, as did the entire country under No Child Left Behind, that every single kid will be proficient by 2015, you're actually suggesting that the school has within its control every factor that influences student achievement. So this factor still, this approach that we're recommending still is firmly rooted in the fact that schools matter and districts matter, but it doesn't suggest that we single-handedly determine the factors that influence. that we single-handedly determine the factors that influence student outcomes in any one of our outcomes. Number four, as I was actually saying that the, for some years, so I got to have them against myself, it may not be possible to measure the statistical significance. Number two, I jumped ahead, the real point was, just because by 2025, we wouldn't reach that aspirational goal would not mean we are never going to reach the aspirational goal. It means that in this three-year plan, we want to make this much progress toward it. Number five, due to data quality and new measures, and this is reluctant, I think, for both Peter and I, we would make this year our baseline rather than last year. Last year, as you all know, was in the midst of the pandemic. It was in the midst of implementing this new strategy as I was describing at the beginning. And so, whether it is our MCA percentages, our FastBridge percentages, our Panorama survey percentages, we have too few kids reliably assessed, I believe, to establish solid baseline for our long-term strategy. There are exceptions to that, grad rates, discipline rates. So where we have good data from last year, that would be our baseline when we bring this back to you in a month for No Child Left Behind. Where we don't from last year, this year would be our baseline year and we would be running this strategy for the three years that follow. I know I've had discussions with a number of board members about exciting alternative measures and different visions of how we might be measuring, whether it's social-emotional competencies or student achievement. I don't want to give up on those measures. I think a district like Rochester that should be a national leader in this area should always be pushing the boundaries, but I believe we should start with the measures we've got because now is the moment when we really need to move fully into implementing this strategic plan. And for us to move into implementation without measures of where we're starting and where we're going, I think really defers the opportunity we have to improve outcomes for all students. So for instance, I shared with a number of board members a framework that an international organization, the Organization for Economic Cooperation and Development, has developed for their measures of what they call social-emotional competencies. It's an amazing framework that I think we should look at. We would never be able to have it ready to use this fall because there would be a lot of adaptation and we'd have to essentially administer it ourselves, whereas with Panorama, we can pay the company to do it. So, I'm recommending that we go with the measures that we have that are strong measures and that we can give this fall. I think we can concurrently be thinking about Improvement Framework 2.0 for Rochester and we can be phasing those in and maybe replacing some of the current measures that are here with additional measures, but that we're not going measureless in the interim. For example, this isn't so much about the measures, but it's actually about the improvement framework. This improvement strategy is very much based on statistical significance. So where did we start? Where do we end up? Was it a statistically, statistically significant improvement? I would love three years from now, when we have this full framework built out and we have the full analytic capacities in place, I would love instead to be able to identify who are the high performers on any one of our measures in our own district and to make that the goal for system improvement. Which schools are raising the achievement of our lowest performing students the fastest? Which schools are sending our students on to post-secondary education in either the greatest numbers or the most diverse numbers? And to make that the standard for the district as a whole and to be sharing what's working in those schools across the system, that is going to take more, I think familiarity with using data, both at the school and district level, but more importantly, it's going to take the measures and the systems to do that really well. I think that would be another example of being very innovative in how we think about improvement. So I'd love to be working toward that. And then a final point, this is, as I said at the outset, looking ahead to implementation of our strategic plan, also less importantly, but importantly, submitting our World's Best Workforce proposal. Not everything that matters to our strategic plan or our strategy is in this measurement frame. This is a piece of our work. We know that we've also committed to values, we've committed to many of the things in the graphic profile that right now are not in our measurement strategy. There are also other aspects in the strategic plan of things that are not as tightly focused on student outcomes or student and staff learning and work environments. So I think that even as I'm proposing this pretty ambitious set of measures and performance indicators, it's not the sum total of our work and we should always be really clear about that because we don't want anyone in the system, especially any student, to think the sum total of their education fits on this page. These would be the measures for the improvement part of our work. So I know that that is a lot. I want to thank everybody for playing along. Peter, are there any points you'd want to make for?
The only one, your last slide covered like four things I was thinking of, but one that, one additional one to consider is that the, wow, I completely lost my train of thought again.
I'm glad it happens to someone else.
Oh, another advantage of using statistical significance year over year is that it's flexible in that if conditions change or a target isn't achieved or the aspirational goal is bonkers high compared to where we are now, you don't have to go back and try to re-figure out what that appropriate next step should be. Mathematically, it's already been calculated, right? And so it gives us flexibility without falling back on 2% across all outcomes or whatever it might be, which is another advantage because in three years, things will be very different from today, so.
Great point.
Thank you. And I'm sure that we have a number of people with questions and comments. I love that you're talking about testing kids fall to fall rather than fall to spring because absolutely mindsets of students are different in the spring than they are in the fall. My question, Dr. Rec, for you is that when the panorama is given about self-awareness, that aspect, and you get, this fall, you get this group of kids and here's their score. And then next fall, you give the same test. Will you compare, fifth graders take it this year, next year they're sixth graders. Will you compare the scores of the same kids? So the sixth graders compared to their fifth grade scores, will you compare the fifth graders this year to the fifth graders?
Absolutely see what you're saying. So, no, it makes sense. And the, the difference is whether you want a snapshot of where the district is now or whether you want to try to measure growth over the course of the year, net of the fact that some of it will be lost over summer. Two fundamentally different goals, I think. I think for us, with the grid that we, that we have, it's more of the operational snapshot, but rather than measuring growth over the course of the year. Otherwise, our growth over the course of the year for an individual student, right? You'd have to, we'd have to measure it differently and then calculate it for each individual student, which is doable to be clear, but that's not the intention. The intention is to look at it from a more systematic standpoint and just compare group averages over time.
So if you have a lot of extra time on your hands, can you just do it both ways?
Yes. But you can tell my wife why I'm working at two in the morning in the basement.
We would have the data for both. It's actually a great question.
Yeah, we would have the data for both.
The basic thing this approach would be, is are we as a system getting better at helping kids develop social awareness?
Yep.
So that our, if this year's fourth graders are here, then next year, do the fourth graders do better because the third graders had more development of social awareness?
Right.
And, and so on. The notion of change in a survey result is technically pretty innovative and complex. What you've just articulated though, Jean, is exactly what FastBridge does in reading a test.
Correct.
We're tracking those same kids.
Yep.
Over the course of any time period.
Any time period. I mean, you know, part of what's nice about FastBridge in the spring is it gives us over the course of the year and then right away in the fall, same kids, we can see what changed over the summer too, so.
And Chair Marvin, to build on that, so with the growth that, data that we have from FastBridge, we'll also be able to tell how close we were maybe to achieving, right? Because I remember with the MCA growth data, that was, those were the two pieces that they were reporting. It wasn't just how many kids were proficient, but you could see how many kids had grown, you know, they were, they were starting the year so not proficient, but they had grown so much a year or more even, but they were still not quite proficient, but you could see how close you were getting.
Absolutely.
And FastBridge lets us do that.
Yep, it does, really nicely. Like it's slick, it's easy to use that way.
Dr. Garcia.
So I, I also appreciate the statistical significance argument. I guess I wonder too though, are we like going to set it like at a, like specific P value, like we're always going to do .01 versus .05 or whatever?
I think it would be .05. I think you want it to be as loose as standard you can.
Yes, and statistical significance, like I guess for other people, like I guess they can recognize why that would be beneficial, but what's the difference across years from one outcome to another, even if both of them are statistically significant, the outcome value is different. So like, you know, if we're looking at a graph and we're doing it in increments of like five versus like .25, like you're going to, it's going to look like, oh my goodness, we made so much more progress, but it may not necessarily be statistically significant. But if we are using those same values and they're, one is growing, I guess, I don't even know if I'm making sense, but I think the visual for people is easier to understand than talking to them about what is statistically significant and what isn't.
Yeah.
So like, just making sure, because I think we've got dinged on this in the past, is that we keep changing our unit of measurement. And so like, we may say like, in this year, we did this and these were the values that we used and this year, we also made progress, but it was different and so people are comparing the same outcome, but like a different, you know, different values essentially. And so, it looks like we're being fishy about things, when really it was just, we didn't have a U to keep us in line. I also, so the thing about, I guess, the social-emotional indicators, grades three through 12, I think I have a little bit of a, I don't want to call it an issue with the word competency, but maybe changing it to be consistent with the other indicators which this thing.
Oh, this year.
So, yeah, so the, instead of calling it competencies, perceptions and experiences like the other ones, because all of the questions that you showed about social awareness are subjective. And so it's a kid saying, I think I'm doing better, but that doesn't actually mean that they are improving in that area. It's like, I can say I'm not ableist as an educator because I'm doing very well, but all of my kids in my class that have disabilities are like, no, that's actually not true because you're not doing these things that would be useful. So we don't have, we have self-observation, but we don't have an external observer like a teacher or a parent and that we also don't have objective measures too. So it's not a competency, it's just, do they think that they're doing better? So just being clear on that. But I do like those two specific, you know, frames, like emotional regulation, social awareness. I just think perceptions and experiences reads differently to me than competency.
Can I just, one really big, that's a great change, Dr. Garcia. The other thing is your comment about the sort of moving the goalposts is exactly why we wanted to have this discussion just focused on the framework, not looking at the data yet. Right now, we're just talking about the goalposts. Eventually, we will, well, starting next month with some baseline data, we'll start to look at actual numbers, but we wanted the focus now to be on, do we have the, the strategy right? And then we got to stick to it. I think you're absolutely right. We got to stick to it for the duration of this plan.
Ms. Amundson.
Back to the P-value discussion. So if we were to graph something, it wouldn't be the P-values, it would be the data.
Correct.
The P-values would be used to say, yes, we met the goal or no, we didn't. Because if you have a P-value that shows 99% confidence, it's also the same with a P-value that is 95% confidence because that's included, right? You have to hit the 95% or you can hit the 99% in confidence. And, but, but the P-value will tell us how reliable the data point is. So if we hit something with 99% confidence, we're like, yeah, we're doing this right. But if we hit it with 95% confidence, we're like, well, we think we're moving in the right direction, we'll know for sure next year. Is that sort of a good way to explore?
Generally, when you're thinking about statistical significance, it's either yes or no. It's not really gradations.
Right.
So you wouldn't necessarily say that.
That we could.
It wouldn't be true to the definition of the statistics. So all you're saying is, when you say you're 95% confident or you're 99% confident, what all you're calculating, is you're having the computer calculate, what's the probability that I'm going to make the wrong conclusion?
Right.
Right? And so that's, the two biggest drivers of that in our case will be the size of the population, the number of students and the effect size. The difference in an effect size that would drive like a .95 to a .99 P-value is going to be really small generally.
But if you're running the numbers to make sure that we've hit a P-value that indicates 95% confidence, it will tell you if we've hit 99, won't it? Just the calculation itself.
But the effect size is what you want to focus on, right? So like the improvement of three percentage points on this assessment, that's the effect that you're interested in. All the probability, all the P-value is telling you is whether or not you should be confident in the fact that that three percentage point matters. But the key point is that three percentage point hypothetically, difference. The P-value just tells you whether or not to pay attention to it.
Well, I'm referring back to Dr. Garcia's question about where would we set it? And you backed off and said, well, we'd want to make it as, as loose as possible at 95, but it seems to me that we can reassure ourselves if we know that we exceeded that goal.
You could. There's not really a scientific reason to do so. The generally accepted threshold is a P-value of .05 and once you exceed that, there, I mean, it tells you about the strength of the model, but once you're at that point, you want to start looking at other, parsing between .95 and .99 is less useful than looking at some of the other diagnostics that would go along with it. It's a very, my, you're, you're talking about a pretty small component of a larger picture. And so, if you were particularly concerned about trying to evaluate the difference between the two, you wouldn't get hung up on what the P-value is. You'd start looking at all the other stuff that goes into it and trying to see if there's some other component that needs tweaking. Does that make, does that answer your question?
I think maybe I wasn't clear. So mine wasn't like, do we choose .01 versus .05? It was more like, we need to decide, I guess, what the goalposts are and leave them there.
Yeah.
Because that will matter to us or to people who are running the stats. And when we're looking at effect size or like, we're looking at the graph, that's what other people are going to see. And so if we keep moving other things behind the scenes, those numbers are going to look different every time because they have for the last however many years, we've been running the same type of data and it comes out with like a different looking pie chart every time. So it was more like, we need to decide what we're doing behind the scenes while we're running the statistical analysis and not change it so that those numbers look, or we're consistently looking at the same thing from now until whenever we're done, 2025 or whatever was on there.
Other questions or comments? Yeah.
Just some really minor things. Dr. Rec, when you were talking about that specific percentages, was that last fall?
Spring, last spring.
Last spring, okay. And then the other question is that when we talk about, I know it's aspirational, about the 85% of students in the first box.
Yep.
Is that a three-year goal or a one-year goal?
So that's the aspirational goal, that if we were in our ideal state, that's what we would expect to see.
In one year or three years or does that not matter?
Ultimately, ever. That's where we want to be.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
I think so.
And you correct me if I'm wrong on that, but, and so the, the statistically significant goal each year puts us on a trajectory to achieve that. Whether that would be achieved in two years or 20, depends on whether, you know, how close we're starting, once we calculate those baseline values. The other thing that I would point out about those percentages is, we tried to base them on, like we didn't pick them out of the air, even the aspirational goals, right? They're based on like MTSS threshold ratios and national research, variety of other components, and then also what the assessment itself does. So that's why you also see some of, like it's not all 80% all the way through because it wouldn't have made sense for everything.
And can you or others speak to why that's not 100%?
So, the, the, and I think Dr. Pikel hit on this earlier too, right? In a, in different language, but the reality is, measurement wise, given a district of our size and at any given time, if you throw darts at the dartboard, you're always going to have some that are off the dartboard, right? And these are, or at least I will, I don't know, I'm no good at darts, but the, so when you're, when you're thinking about where our students are in any given point in time when we're measuring, there are always going to be students who are, even if we were in our ideal state, who haven't had the supports they need. there are always gonna be students who are, even if we were in our ideal state, who haven't had the supports they need quite yet, are new to the district, have had something happen in their lives outside of school, any of the other factors that could be at play, that we don't necessarily have direct control over. Um, or we do have direct control over them, they just haven't had enough opportunity yet, if that makes sense. And so that's sort of where we get at with, I mean, I agree, right? Ultimately, that's where we, of course, that's where all of us wanna be. Realistically, from a measurement standpoint, it's just not gonna probably be an outcome that we can achieve, that any district could achieve.
I think, if I could add to that, um, we are on the cusp, and our strategic plan puts a line in the sand on a major emphasis on what Peter just called MTSS, or multi-tiered systems of support. That work is partly theory-based, but there's some growing evidence behind it. And it really says, 85% of the kids, unless you're in a school with a very unique population, either because they're all, you know, Peter Rucks, or they're kids who are struggling.
Or a very small population.
Or a very small population. 85% of the kids should be able to thrive in your core program. 10% can do that with supplemental supports, and 5% are maybe not gonna, they maybe need an alternative program. Now, that's a generalization that has to be continually scrutinized, but that, that was kind of the theory in that case. And I think that, to your point before, Dr. McLaughlin, some of these, none of them are one-year goals. In this instance, when we look at a baseline of 60-some percent, I think 85% by the end of our strategic plan is actually achievable. So that actually is one we could get to. There are some where we're starting with so much ground to make, that by the end of three years, we can be significantly far from where we are, but we're not gonna get to that aspirational goal, and that then becomes potentially the next strategic plan. So some of these are within reach in three years, and some of them, we better make meaningful progress toward, but we'll still be working.
Awesome, thanks. And then I just have one comment. I love to see the early childhood programs as an academic indicator.
Yeah.
But that's great to see. I don't think I remember seeing that ever before.
Some of our early childhood people liked that too.
They did.
So I'm curious regarding, I appreciate the use of the term statistical significance. But as I may relate to where our parents and/or public and media may continue to look at and can't wait for the MCA to be released, as an indicator as to how they perceive our district and children doing. Will we embark on any, if you will, legislative, um, conversation or, um, efforts to potentially encourage the state to reevaluate the instruments that they're using, or maybe even to get on board with RPS, in terms of using this as a more relevant gauge to assess student growth? Because I, I feel in a sense that, and I get it, I can follow it, and it's, uh, well laid out, uh, but when we hear social awareness, the conversations I have, parents are talking about social awareness assignment, good, but what about academic performance? So how do we actually have that conversation in such a fashion to where the public is on board, okay, and they understand, not so much what we're saying, but they understand and desire to be part of what we're, public and district, what we're doing. Not suggesting that you have a readily available answer. You may, you and Peter, you guys are pretty far, but, you know, just, I'm less about the P, the P whatever it was. More about this.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
I would say a few points, Dr. Barlow. One, I would love to work with the Legislative Committee on proposing an alternative approach for Minnesota's Improvement Framework. And I will tell you, having been up at the State Superintendent's Conference last week, I would submit we would have near-universal support from superintendents for that. I don't know about school board members, but, um, that's right now called the North Star System, and it just doesn't work. And I was on the committee that tried to develop it and propose a different approach. Then there's the question of the state tests, which is another issue, and so I would love to talk about a policy agenda in this space. I do think, regardless of what happens at the state level, Dr. Barlow, you've hit a key thing. I think it's also implicit in what Dr. Garcia was talking about. This is our wonky improvement agenda for the board to utilize and for leadership to utilize in seeking to get better. We need to find ways to make it accessible to our constituents. Uh, you know, and all of you know, we have now a very skilled communications instructor in Momsu Knutson, who's very good at putting things in the plain language. I will also say, I think, with our families, with our, uh, with our educators, and also even with our reporters, not Jordan Sheer, of course, but we need to do some assessment literacy. Because if I had a dollar for every reporter I've read who writes, the test scores went up, or the test scores went down, and they were up 1% in either direction, and I would say, no, that means no change. And it was, but it's reported as upward. I think we need to, in an accessible way, help people understand some of these things. And so whether we ever use the term statistical significance or not, uh, is an important question, but we need to find ways to make this accessible to our, to our, to our community, internal and external, to the district. I think the thing that's exciting for me, though, is that we have to get the foundation of the system strong, and then we're communicating something that we know is sound, um, as opposed to trying to explain something that, um, is just unexplainable, which is a position I've been in before.
Ms. Amundson.
So, uh, parents often feel like something, often feel and stress the concern that in directing a lot of the resources to kids who need the most healthy proficiency, that we're neglecting other groups of students. Are there items in this list that you would consider already addressed that? And if not, would it be feasible for us to put in a question that simply says, every student makes one year of progress? Because if you've got a student in sixth grade who is working at eighth grade level in math, and at eighth grade, that student's still working at eighth grade level in math, the family might be disappointed in the quality of the education. Is there something we can put in to reassure those kinds of concerns?
I think there's, it's a great question, Dr. Amundson. There's a number of areas here that are explicitly designed to focus on that. Fast bridge, unlike some assessments, doesn't top out. So what we, a kid doesn't hit a ceiling beyond which we can't measure growth, which happens in certain tests. They're like, whoop, it's beyond grade level, we're no longer measuring. They can keep, so we can track growth for a very, you know, well-prepared kid from there. That's one area. I think the same thing is true of the ACT indicators here. The pre-ACT is gonna give those families a lot of evidence in ninth grade about readiness for post-secondary, and of course, that assessment is very much, not many kids are topping out on that. I think similarly, the taking post sec courses in high school that are in post-secondary credit, and then the enrollment in post-secondary is another space, where we're also speaking to those students who are academically doing well, and we wanna accelerate their learning.
But if you're, if you're looking at like, for instance, the pre-ACT test scores, you're not tracking individual students, you're just saying, where are all the students who took the test that year at, not are they continuing to grow? Am I correct?
Well, but the pre-ACT, as we're proposing it, would be entirely diagnostic toward the ACT in 11th grade, and so while for the district improvement, yes, we would say, this is what our percent in reading was in the ACT, we would be working with our schools to identify individually where those kids were, and actually designing, and this is where Dr. Obama's work comes in, designing interventions to enhance that reading proficiency, which, again, goes all the way up to a 36, um, for those students before the end of high school. So there would be an individual component. We talked a lot about doing fast bridge at the high school level, and as we know, once kids get to high school, they have increasingly their own minds and their own motivations, and we thought we would likely have a motivation problem with a, with a fat frequent assessment that isn't used in colleges, and so that's why we're proposing a investment in the ACT.
And I, I don't have an issue with the test mechanism itself. It's just, is there a way to reassure parents that their individual student has not stagnated in any way, while we continue to rightly so put resources to the kids who are not meeting proficiency?
So is your question, do you think they're focusing on students who are underachieving, or again, neglecting students who are overachieving, or who are really underfaced?
Well, even overachievers can underachieve if compared to themselves. That's exactly what I'm looking at, is the individual student continuing to make progress.
Will it take resources away from students who need it?
Well, a lot of parents argue that it does. So I'm just wondering if there's a measurement that we can put in to reassure, to prove that each child is still continuing to grow.
But, as I say, and I see Dr. Garcia wants to do, that, that would absolutely be possible, Kate, with fast bridge, and that will absolutely be possible with pre-ACT, ACT, exactly that, at the individual student level. So families would get, here's where my kid was in the pre-ACT, here's where they need to be, there, there's a predictive score for 11th grade, and then of course, we can actually.
That's not even what's being proposed. We're not using that as a district improvement indicator.
No, it would be. It would be. I mean, it, it's similar, actually, to the first question that Dr. Marvin asked, is that right now, for district improvement, it is more point in time, but the data would all be used for improvement. So we would say, in this given year, here's what kids scored on the pre-ACT, every one of our high schools would be seeing, there's where every individual student scored, and clearly, the objective is to help that student progress in reading and math.
I get that, but my question is, is that going to come to the school board? Because our job as a school board member is to say whether or not our school district is meeting the needs of all of our students. And if we don't have that in the report, as school board members, we won't be able to reassure our public, parents and community members whose taxpayer dollars are going to the school district. I, I, I don't question for sure that we're caring about every individual student, and that we're doing our best for every individual student, that we're examining the test scores for every individual student. I just wanna know if it's being reported in some way in this plan, so that we can reassure ourselves and the public that progress is being made.
You would be able to look in reading and math, Kate, at 1% hitting their improvement target, which is growth.
Okay.
And then you'd be able to look at the improvement between pre-ACT and ACT, which is growth. So we would have that. It wouldn't, you, you'd look at those comparatively, in that sense. I think that's.
That's not answered my question.
Okay.
Yeah, and I was just gonna add too, I think, because there are measures that would talk about each individual child, so the parent or the family can decide, like, did they stagnate, or, you know, whatever's happening. But I think on a, on a total level, so when I did IEP evaluations in a school, I think the thing that happened is kind of what you're talking about. Like, I would assess a fifth grader who was doing like fifth grade math in second and third grade, and then levels out and is performing at grade level in fifth grade, and everyone's like, oh no, he probably has ADHD. And I just say, no, he's a very bright child, he's just now exactly where he, you know, he has, he has reached, I don't wanna say a plateau for himself, but he's reached a level in which he is performing the same as all of the other students in his class, and it wasn't necessarily because there was something in the class that was occurring or not. It was just that his natural ability was, okay, now I am at grade level. When I move on to sixth grade, I will be at sixth grade math, I will be at seventh grade math. So it was parents, I think, panicking that he wasn't still two-plus grades ahead of his peers, when he eventually, like, okay, now he is sort of performing at the same level as everyone else. And so it was a lot of, like, education in that part, like, I would do all of these standardized assessments and say, his IQ is X, and he's performing in X way, and there, yes, there maybe is a slight change in how he was performing before, but it's not like he's regressing. He has reached finally, like, his classmates have caught up to him, essentially, and so.
But I think there's a lot of parents who would consider that a failure of the education system, and I hear you saying you don't agree with that, but I, I think there are a lot of families who will. And I would have for my own students.
And I don't, and I don't disagree that that happens on a teacher level, on a parent level, I mean, school board, but I think it's not necess, like, for the school board, I want to support people who are having those conversations with families, like, I'm not gonna tell the school board, or I'm not gonna tell someone in the district, well, I think your kid, your individual child did this or did not do this based on all of this data. Like, that's a, that's a family or a teacher with a family discussion. And there are developmental caps for some kids, and I think people just need to understand that as well. Like, just because I'm making gains over every year in math, at some point, there is a potential for me to be like, and this is my math capacity, like, I'm, I can't do more than a ninth grade math. No matter how hard I try, I can maybe do some work. But these are the things in which now, like, I am not regressing, I have just gotten to the point where, like, my natural ability is no longer compensating, like, I can't compensate in that way, so now I need maybe additional assistance. So having those conversations, very real conversations with family about, like, you know, your kid is, whatever their IQ is, whatever their IQ is, they're performing at grade level, it's not as if they are regressing. If you want these other resources, here they are, and offering them that. Because if you're gonna expect, like, I may want my child to be an opera singer, but if they don't have that ability, it's not gonna happen. You know what I mean? So like, they may be, they may be able to get the music theory, but they don't have the vocal ability. So I can get them to a certain point, and after that, it's really a family resources of how much further they go after that, and kid interest and willingness.
There's a number of things that you've stated that I think deserve more discussion, because I'm not, not sure I agree with all of them, but it's not in this parameter, which, you know, we, we don't spend a lot of time at the school board level talking about, are we meeting the needs of kids who come to us already above proficiency? And, and in the four years that I've been on the board, I don't remember having a lengthy discussion about those kids. So it, it's, I won't be here much longer, but it's something that I would request, would go onto a future agenda, maybe not while I'm still here, so that we can talk about some of the things that you just were putting forward. Because I think some of them are up for debate.
I think part of what you're talking about, um, well said, that every student needs to continue to be supported. Half of this, really, half of it is about academic indicators. You know, when, we care about academics for every child. The other half helps kids get to where they need to be, and get as far as they can be. So under learning environment, for, for instance, pedagogical effectiveness. So here's this student who really needs more in math, needs faster, needs whatever. It's important in this district that we have educators who understand that kid has some real ability, and he needs promotion, or he needs to be in a, a, a post-secondary group or whatever. So I think that's where it comes in, is individual students will have their needs recognized, and their gifts recognized and supported. And I, I think that's more or less on an individual basis, you know, that's, every child is important. And so much of the rest of this, I think, is about, how do we support in every way, every child, so that they can do the best that they can do and be the best they can be? You know, I'm looking even under social emotional indicators, emotional regulation, social awareness, really. Well, if they can't be with other people, if they don't understand how to control their own emotions, how to work with others, maybe they'll do okay in school, but after school, they're gonna be clobbered. So to make them a success, you need to help them build these other abilities as well. And I, I do think that especially that pedagogical effectiveness speaks most into exactly what you're concerned about. And I hear you. I think that's important, but I think that's really addressed here. Ms. Workman, you had your hand up.
Um, yeah, I have two things. I'm gonna ask Dr. Garcia if this would be an analogy of, say, I have a student who's seven years old, and they're playing the Mendelssohn Violin Concerto with an orchestra. Another student is nine. So by the time the seven-year-old is 17, they're still going to be playing the Mendelssohn Violin Concerto. The student who at age seven is not, may very well be playing it at age 17. Is that sort of a comparison?
I would say that's absolutely possible. And I'm not saying that if the seven, or the seven, seven-year-old who's playing the Mendelssohn Concerto right out of the gate, doesn't get the assistance they need, because they absolutely should. And I think that that is where we, as a district, can identify, like, we need to be flexible with the kids, so they may be in a fifth grader, but reading ends. so they may be a fifth grader, but reading and second grade math, but, you know, performing, I don't know, reading at, like, an eighth grade level. So just because, I, I think we do sometimes a kid's a disservice, like, just because you are of an age, doesn't mean that you're performing at that grade level across all subjects. And so that's, I think, why Rochester is very unique and that we have all of these other options, but I think sometimes that is true. And when I have to sit and tell a parent and a child, like, your child has a 70 IQ, they are not going to be able to do this in this capacity, but that doesn't mean we can't give them the supports that they need, that is a very different conversation than a child who has 130 IQ, for example, and is struggling to do certain things. So giving the, the people who have that knowledge, the ability to share that information, or to educate the family on what that means, and how we give them resources is one thing, but we, as the school board, like, I care about every single student in this district, but I'm not going to sit down and have an individual conversation with you as a parent about, why didn't my kid this MCA this year, but they did last year? Because that's not my role in this space, but I absolutely would help facilitate, like, whoever needs to have that conversation with a parent, please do, and how, if you bring to us as a board, how can we get these students to continue to perform at their best capacity? That would be great, but not everybody's going to perform at the same level.
And before we move on, so what I understand is the support system addresses all students, the UNLs that are doing quite well, nothing is taken from Peter, not just Peter, but Peter and Paul, and some of those students that are doing very well will continue to receive the supports they need to continue to do very well, and those who can do better will receive the supports they need to do better. Is that correct?
It is correct. It, it implies, and I'm looking at Dr. Akbambu as I say this, and this is absolutely what we're committed to do, that in that core tier of instruction, we have got rich, engaging content for both kids who are on track and kids who are, for lack of a better way to put it, ahead of track. But, yes, they're all in the base of the pyramid. And then there's a subset of kids, again, the theoretical 10%, which often does play out in the data, we'll see what happens through our work with the University of Minnesota here, 10% who can access that but need additional supports, and then another five who really need a different educational program often. And again, those are rough percentages, but yeah, within that base, we need to have both acceleration for kids who are absolutely, you know, hitting it out of the park, and good core curriculum for the kind of student Dr. Garcia was talking about. That's, that's a heavy lift, but we can get there, we have to get there.
So we are continuing to look at, yeah, just a second, our indicators and how we are going to know if and when we get there, and that's the core of our conversation. Ms. Nathan.
So one technical question on goal one of the early childhood social emotional development. So all the other goals for early childhood say 85% meet expectations.
Typho.
Okay.
Typho, I don't know.
So the typho and the DRTs. Got some work to do.
So Kathy, which one has changed?
So goal one should say.
Yeah.
Eighty-five percent of students meet expectations.
All the DS goals should be said.
Okay, good. Maybe there was something special.
And Ms. Workman, you had something else?
Yeah, I think, um.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I cut you off?
Indeed, you did, but it's all right.
Sorry, Ms. Workman, Ms. Nathan still have the floor or the microphone?
I love all of you. So I'm looking at the two sides of the handout, and this might be a really big question, but how do we know what of this side impacted the outcomes? How do we know which lever, program, initiative had the impact on the numbers that we're measuring? Which is, I know, probably a million dollar question.
It, it's a million-dollar study that we would do, I mean, that's actual, real research. There would be, I was actually pulling out today some of the research in preparation for this, some of the research on system-level improvement, and it does take an analytic effort that requires research capacity beyond the district research office to actually, when a district generates that improvement, actually identify what the causal factors are. So when, not if, but when we start to produce these improvements, I think we would be very compelling research subject for some researchers to come in and actually find out which of the factors in our strategy are the ones driving that improvement. It is impossible right now to say exactly which of these factors are going to matter the most for which of these outcomes. We are basing this on the best research that, at least, I've been able to find in system-level improvement, but there's an indirect link between the first side of this one pager and the second side of this one pager, and we're going to need to get all these strategies underway and be attentive to that question.
So in general, for people who may not have been following the whole train of thought of how we got here, we picked the components of the strategic plan not only based on our community input, but what we know from other people's research that they've done before on best practices to make positive change in education.
Uh huh.
In the short term, if we find that we're making improvements with whatever we're doing, we'll probably take the, if it's not broke, don't fix it, and encourage our schools and our district to kind of continue along the path until we dig in deeper to really say, we should put more emphasis on this strategy, or less emphasis on the other strategy, because those are the things that have the most or less impact on the outcomes.
Um, yeah, Dr. Nathan, that really highlights a pretty important part of this recommended approach that I hadn't talked about. These are measures of district-wide improvement, system level. As you heard from Elton Hills last week, there is a lot of alignment between a system-level agenda and a building-level agenda, but it shouldn't be a straitjacket, because each school serves a different population, has a different staff. So we, especially in January, when we launched the fully-developed version of our new school improvement planning process, our schools need to be very, very attentive to these things, they also need to have the flexibility to identify other needs that are there. At the building level, it is more possible to do what you're suggesting, to say, we adopted this curriculum, we saw this change in our FastBridge scores, therefore, we can call in Peter and look at the data, and we actually can be more confident that the change in the scores, we can't be totally confident unless we do a randomized trial, but we can be more confident that the curriculum that we changed led to the FastBridge reading score change or math score change. That's very hard at the system level because of all the complexity that we're working across, but I think we also need the system-level agenda. I mean, that, that's what we're all, you know, here to do, otherwise we'd be in a building. But we do have to have alignment between our building-level goals and the district level, and that's something that I'm looking forward to becoming increasingly clear over the next five, six months.
Good conversation. Any other questions or comments?
I had one.
Yes.
Knowing that we're not voting on this because it's study session, did these indicators then replace things that are happening now? The thing that comes to mind is like the NWEA, other things like that, are those going to go away and be replaced by this process?
Yeah, Dr. McLaughlin, largely predating this year, our schools and district has discontinued NWEA, so yes for that one. It is mostly addition, not subtraction. So we've had a few schools, like Elton Hills, make use of FastBridge, now we're going to do it, Kate. We have not been doing the pre-ACT at all, now we're going to do that. One of the reasons we're sticking with panorama is because all of our schools have been doing it, though we haven't had the level of participation we need for this strategy. So not much drops off, but some stuff gets added, and then I think we have a pretty stable, you know, set of indicators. What I'm, in my head, and I have a meeting with FA and Peter and others in the Office of Academics next week or the week after, what I'm going to recommend, just to preview, is what we bring you in November is the results of the last World's Best Workforce Proposal that, that you reviewed and approved with the outcomes included, and that you vote to retire that approach, lock, stock, and barrel, and adopt whatever version of this approach we arrive upon between now and next month, which I'm not hearing a lot of concern about from board members. And so essentially, our World's Best Workforce Proposal would be retiring the framework that you approved last year and saying, going forward, this is actually our new framework for improvement, and then to Dr. Garcia's point, we got to stick to it going forward. So that's what I'm thinking we'll bring you to look at, as opposed to trying to overly connect this to the last framework. Like, our heads will explode if we try and actually do that, I think we just say, that was then, this is going forward. I'm confident no one at MDE is going to call us and say, how could you abandon your previous proposal? We have a new strategic plan, a new strategy, I think it's conversant with the intent of the legislation.
Ms. Nathan. So two of the measures that are related to the disciplinary infractions are not based on a tool or an objective assessment, they're based on human behavior. So we've been accused in the past of the variation in our data regarding disciplinary behavior is because of how people choose to report their feelings about reporting or their feelings about taking action. What are we doing to ensure the robustness of, of that data so we can have some confidence in the consistency?
Dr. Nathan broadly stated two things. One, we have actually narrowed and tightened the definitions of disciplinary infractions that we're highlighting, and that's a challenge, because we still have a laundry list from the state and the feds. But we've said, our codes are these, I think we have 30, we try to get tighter about it. Then the second is, we've really tried, and Jackie Peterson has leadership responsibility along with Chris Lingan and others in her office for this, we've tried to be really sure that that data is being recorded in exactly the same way for every infraction. So the, systematizing the codes and then systematizing when you enter the code, and that's never done, we always have to keep doing it. And we've also been really explicit with schools, don't fail to report because you're worried the data will look bad. Nobody wins that way. The school doesn't have the evidence, the board doesn't have the evidence, so there, we need to be very cautious in how we deal with that. We know we want to reduce the total number of disciplinary infractions and the disparities among student groups, but we don't want to stigmatize reporting the truth in the data, which I have not heard people saying has happened, and I have not seen evidence in the data to worry that that's happening. I mean, you saw our rates last summer, we are disciplining kids at significant rates in this district right now, and we continue to have those disparities that we all are committed to move away from, but that indicator is a particular one that, it actually is true for all these indicators, whenever you attach attention to an indicator, you can create a perverse incentive to change that. It's one reason why I would never recommend, and this proposal does not include ranking schools, putting them on lists, having like red, yellow, green, or A, B, C, D, F, that this is, the data is for improvement, it's like data is a flashlight, not a sledgehammer, and so the data is here to make us better, but not to have subjective rankings of that, because that's when you really get into that, that, that kind of trouble.
Dr. Garcia, I think you have the last word.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you for that clarification question, Dr. Nathan, and thank you for the clarification, Dr. McLaughlin. I just wanted to say, I really appreciate the strategic plan, core performance indicators, because I think that it offers the opportunity for us as a whole district to give equitable, adaptable, specialized access to education for all of our students, and I think that it also gives, at least, it's letting us know that we are in the business of supporting our educators and being able to do that. So obviously, we clearly spoke today that in one classroom, there can be a range of talents and abilities and willingness and engagement, and I think that this, to me, feels more like we're doing the work that our students need, because not all of them learn the same, and not all of them have the same resources or capacity to do this, same with families, same with the educators, and so I feel like this helps us take kind of a broad assessment or the temperature of the district and make tweaks where we need to, and, and these indicators that really matter for everybody.
Thank you. I, I will, and.
I still have questions.
Okay.
So would you like me to take them offline and, and hit the staff up alone?
No, they're absolutely appropriate, they're about the document that you have in front of you.
They are.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Questions 15 and 16 are about things that our students are doing after they leave our school district, I'm assuming that we do have the tools to reach those students and follow up and find out what they're doing, or you wouldn't have proposed it?
That is correct. I wrote the first grant for the state for the statewide Long Student Education Data System, or SLEDs, 25 years ago, it wasn't funded, but the next one was, and so there is a great personal satisfaction for me in adding these data indicators.
And then question 13 is about secondary credits. I was wondering what approximately that percentage is right now, if anyone happens to know that off the top of their head, the percentage of students, because I'm wondering whether or not 65 is much of a movement, and if so, do we have the capacity, are we moving this indicator primarily by encouraging students to pursue those opportunities? Are those opportunities going to be in our schools rather than expecting students to be able to get over to RCTC, because then we have an access issue? So I'm just wondering what we're thinking with that, and would we be able to accommodate every student who's interested in pursuing those opportunities?
Yeah, Dr. McLaughlin, it's a good question. I don't know off the top of my head where, what our baseline is, this still would represent improvement. In addition to going to CTECH or PTECH, or taking a class at RCTC, this includes advanced placement, college in the schools, we would love to increase our career and technical offerings that are credit-bearing, this is the work that Heather Hogan will be leading in Will's Department of Equity and Engagement, and of course, increasing students from underrepresented groups in all those classes. So, yes, we have a lot of progress to make in this space, and we know that while it's great to take kids across town to go to PTECH or CTECH or RCTC, we also need these offerings in our buildings, and we certainly have a, we have a nice suite of AP offerings. I know Dr. Akbambu has a very personal, exciting vision around international baccalaureate that I won't let yet ask her to talk about, but she's been conspiring with some folks at John Marshall to begin that conversation.
Those AP tests though cost the family, if I'm recalling correctly?
What's that?
The AP test fees.
We are, they do, we have a sliding scale, and we actually are looking at the discrepancy, not discrepancies, differences between our schools in terms of how we subsidize low-income kids for advanced placement right now. We do it in, we don't, we do it in all schools, we do it to differing degrees, because we have different numbers of students whose families are low-income in our high schools, so that's actually something they're looking at in our Office of Academics. And I should say, my mention of John Marshall was only because FA had a great visit there, so I don't, I'm not announcing any of that.
So that, we aren't concerned about barriers based on availability or access?
I think, we're always concerned, we want to make sure that taking the AP test is not prohibited because of family income, and we do have subsidy right now, it is based, school by school, based on the number of low-income kids, so if you have a school with a lot more low-income kids, you have fewer full-paying students to subsidize that, so we're just now taking a look at that to make sure that we're leveraging that. We don't want to have, you can take the AP test, of course, class without taking the test, we also want to have as many students as choose to do so take the test, and we don't want financial.
But this talks about earning the credit, so.
Yep.
Taking the class doesn't get you the credit.
The goal is that you're earning the credit.
All right.
Absolutely. We talked a lot about that, is it just participation, and we're attaching it to you got the credit.
Very good.
Good? Thank you. We'll move on then to 3.02, Board Goals Update 20.223. I think this should be a relatively efficient, quick conversation. We set three goals with two or three measures for each goal as a board, and at this point, we're just going to come back and see where we are with each goal right now. The danger is, you set goals, you have great aspirations, and at the end of the year, you say, oh, we forgot. So I'll read the goal and the measure, and then anybody in, on the board, cabinet for that matter, if you've been involved, let us know what work's been done. So the first one is to, first goal is improve board communication stakeholders. One of our three measures for that was to approve a board handbook that describes the school board's roles and responsibility, includes our board's procedures and protocols. Anybody want to report on that?
Okay.
Yes.
We had our conversation at study session, we've collected some handbooks, we've gotten some additional handbooks for us to look at, we're getting through our four, three? We're getting through our four, three, four policy committee meetings this month because MSA sent us a boatload of changes. And then, once those are done, the policy committee will turn its attention to that. So, yes, we're on track.
Excellent. The second measure was to work with our PS communications staff to create a protocol for posting viewer-friendly, accessible summaries of board meetings. The idea here was we'd have a quick video after each business meeting to give a informal summary of some of the highlights. Anyone want to comment on that?
You and Karen are doing them all, right?
Say it again.
As if you and Karen are doing them all, right?
Well, and Kathy, so far. And you now have, we have a sign-up sheet. I think we've got a pretty good system in place. The communications people have been working with us typically on Wednesdays after a Tuesday meeting, will show up and do a very informal, two or three-minute summary, which gets posted online. I think it gets sent out on, Amy, it gets sent out on-
On staff.
On what?
To the staff.
To the staff, okay.
And it is on social media.
On social media. I think probably at the end of the year, maybe January, we should figure out some way of evaluating whether it's effective or not. Three of us so far have shown up to tape these things. So far, I haven't heard about any nominations. But, you know, it could still happen. But if this is an effective way or not of communicating, but we've got that, I think, pretty much under control. And the third measure is to set a schedule for quarterly community listening conversation sessions for the 2022-23 school year. We have a list of proposed dates. This is always tricky to set a time for listening. We have one that'll be from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., one from 10:00 to 11:00 a.m. on a Saturday, one from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. on a Wednesday, one from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. on a Monday throughout the year. We haven't done the work yet to determine where these would be. Probably, we would use school facilities and we have to find the availability of that, as well as availability for one or more board members to facilitate. But we have a tentative schedule set up and we'll get feedback on that.
And Chair Marvin, can we clarify, is this for the sessions, we could have no more than three board members there at a time? So, the intent is to rotate attendance, or is it something we'll give public notice of so that all board members can be there?
We would certainly have, give public notice. And I think, the way we could, one way we could do this would be to have just tables set up with a board member as a note taker at each table. And then, just have folks show up as they want to and talk about what they want to talk about. We may decide that there, if there's a particular issue that's going on at the time, we could also have one of these or set up additional sessions where it would be focused on just that issue. But I don't believe that would be breaking the open meeting law if we weren't making any decisions, we weren't meeting together, but we were simply listening to people who showed up and had something to say.
Do you, I don't know if we need to have a conversation as a board, or if it's a recommendation from the chair of the Community Engagement Committee? In terms of setting expectations for the community as far as if they're coming with questions, or if they're coming with an issue and they want to hear what we have to say about it, or if they want that information that night, how do we set that expectations about the one-way, two-way kind of conversation that may or may not happen at those events?
It's a good question. Does anybody have something they want to say about that?
Well, I'll briefly comment. I, along with the majority of the cabinet members and superintendent attended a, for want of a better word, a community meeting. And the beauty of that meeting was the community spoke and where they had questions, they would then ask, okay? For me, and I think probably, well, I can speak for myself, it was more of a listening, not a defending, but simply an opportunity to hear them. Less structured, I think we should probably maybe consult with the communications, ask the Western style of structure, sit at a table, you know, let's, you know, have this conversation. That was not the case, and that seemingly worked quite well. And so, less than being able to say, well, we planned four meetings, we did four, and so statistically, what was that term we used earlier?
Statistically.
Yeah, statistical significance. We want something that's significant versus simply, you know, having something occur. So, I would be a strong proponent of less structured and allowing the community to speak. And we don't have to be fair. If we have an opportunity, if a question is raised and they said, will one of you from the board maybe comment regarding this policy? Or, you know, can you explain this or that? Appropriate, but, well, that's all I have.
So, I heard Mr. Barlow just say that he would be happy to set up parameters.
Oh, sure, I would. Absolutely.
And as a member of the Community Engagement Committee, that would be awesome. Thank you, Don.
Sure, no problem.
Awesome. I love having a plan. So, I think maybe the first one, let's try that and see how it goes. Basically, I think the community will tell us what works and what doesn't work.
For the record, I can't make the first one.
Okay.
It will probably be on the other side of the table for the next three.
Well, and there's the thing, and it may be just one or two board members can be there. We're trying to get these at different days of the week and different times of the day to accommodate the most people. And we've done this in the past, and we've gotten anywhere between two and 40 people who show up.
Gina, I won't be able to be the first one either.
Okay. Well, and again, these, none of these dates have been published yet. So, you can send feedback to the Community Engagement Committee about what dates work for you. They don't, and then Mr. Barlow will do all the work.
Sure.
Love that. Okay. Our second goal is to monitor progress toward goals and outcomes of the strategic plan, utilizing the goals of the strategic plan as primary basis for making decisions. Measures at board meetings, be prepared to reference the strategic plan goals during discussions. Comments about that?
I think the question I had about that was, what's the reference, what's the reference point, right? Be prepared to reference strategic plan goals during discussions. Well, tonight, we had a series of goals in the document with the outcome measures. We have goals in our schedule in terms of the timing as to when some of the strategic initiatives are going to come. So, it's a timing goal. So, I guess I'm just looking for some, for us to have some common clarity of what are we referencing during meetings? Is it the snapshot? Is it the measurements? We just make it up as we go along. That works for me, too.
Yeah, I wonder if a better term for that would be to reference strategic plan initiatives? And if we agree that it was sort of this, you know, the one-page, the 24 initiatives here? I mean, we spent a lot of time at study sessions and at board meetings talking about the strategic plan and learning about it. And I think this one was all about, we have this strategic plan, just like the board goals. We need to make sure that we continue to be informed and to have it be meaningful, a meaningful part of our conversation throughout the year and coming years.
Yeah, I think whatever structure we've had recently has just been built into the structure that we're talking about, strategic plan, because it's been brought up so much. So, I feel like we, that we met just because that's how our meetings have been structured. And then, by obviously September, we've already made dates in the A, B, C, D for updates over the next two years. So, I think we've done both, but I don't disagree with Kathy in wanting a little bit more clarity on like, are we talking about like us as each individual? So, when I make a comment, I'm saying, I would like to make a comment in relation to indicator, blah, 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 about this thing? Or is it that it's, that's not just going to be put into the agenda? Like, these indicators are being referenced, or this, whatever this item is touches on these indicators? Does that make sense?
So, that, I was going to say, that's maybe a good question for the cabinet because we want to make sure that we've got that link there, but we don't want to make it so complicated that before a cabinet member speaks, they have to figure out, now, is this 3A or is this 6? Yeah, Amy.
I was just going to wonder aloud, maybe, if there are some operational daily activity kinds of things that will come to you that really aren't natural links? And I'm thinking about the annual milk bid or things like that where it would be a stretch to tie back to that. So, if the language could be maybe a little bit more specific about those visioning decisions that you're making?
Gina, I have something on that, but I think, I focused on the word discussions here, that that's not really something we discuss, we vote on, but we don't discuss. But I think in the idea of discussion, the way I read this is that, you know, if it makes sense, that we could say something like, you know, in my opinion, this really aligns well with this piece of the strategic plan. And it's helpful to have the snapshot, putting it in categories and giving us a good summary without having the whole book every meeting page through.
I think, like, my recollection of this was that, and not to pick on Scott, but I think we, like, initially, it was like, we need to be referencing the students. Like, how does a milk bid, like, how does that directly tie to students in our meetings? But then, we had a student put at the center of the image for our strategic plan, but, you know, so it was like milk bids, and then, you know, if it's maintenance stuff, like, how are we tying that to kids? We need to make that a little bit more explicit in our meetings. And so, I don't, I don't necessarily know that it has to be like, indicator one, subset two, blah, 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 like, this is exactly what we're talking about. But I think it was more about, how are we always identifying that the thing we're talking about right now is affecting our students? And that's where the student, being the center of the strategic plan, that's where we're tying those two things together.
And I think the cabinet can help us with that.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Go ahead.
So, I'm prompted by Dr. Garcia, your point. I reread the goal, and it's utilizing goals of the strategic plan as a primary basis for making decision. And so, the language here is about discussion, which is obviously part of leadership on a school board. Ultimately, you take action through motions that you vote for. So, it could be wherever appropriate, i.e. not the milk vote, wherever appropriate, integrate or include strategic plan goals and initiatives in board actions. I mean, so when you're voting, you're tying it to the strategic plan. So, in pursuit of the strategic plan goal of deeper learning, we are approving this curriculum purchase that because it is tied to deeper learning. Or in pursuit of our goal of MTSS, we are, I'm thinking about money right now because I'm looking at John Carlson. So, we are approving this software package. But it could be in an array of, I don't know, it's one, it's one idea. In addition to board dialogue, you could say, the strategic plan is explicitly referenced at wherever relevant in board.
It could be a whereas.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, whereas, or even in the actual-
For school climate, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I think that makes sense, that we're going to acknowledge, when it's appropriate, we'll acknowledge that this, what part of the strategic plan, that the strategic plan is part of that decision-making process. So, Amy, I think it may not come up again during the milk bids or when we have to buy, Scott.
Just an example.
It's sticky. We'll be remembering that for a long time.
When we have to re-roof the, whatever building we're re-roofing. Okay, and then, the next one is designate dates on the A, B, C, D, annual board calendar draft for plan updates over the next two years. Dr. Pecel and Kathy Nathan have done-
Not in that order.
I was trying to be polite.
Thank you.
Have done an incredible amount of work in getting this thing done in a system, in a structure that's going to be sustainable for a long time. So, and it's been a huge amount of time.
And I have already used it to answer questions from the community who have said, when are you going to talk about X again? And it was very easy to be able to say, on this date.
And here's a secret not everybody knows. Now Kathy's going to hit me, I shouldn't have sat next to her. She started that work before she was even on the board. She started cataloging the annual flow, did you not?
I did.
The annual flow of when we-
I had nothing else to do on a Tuesday night. That's, it's impressive.
That must be gratifying, that stuff.
It is, thank you for that.
You did a lot of work.
Our third goal is create methods for engaging and educating the community and staff on the RPS budget. Prepare, and the measures, prepare a concise document and video describing the fundamentals of the Minnesota School Finance and RPS school budget. And, okay, with that one.
The fundamentals of Minnesota School Finance.
It's like, what did you say?
I feel like this was the day I was missing.
Well, here's the policy force on the-
You know, the Lego-
-Minnesota School Finance. As I recall, the discussion we have is that the school, the annual budget book that Mr. Carlson and his department puts out tells you everything, not everything there is to know, but everything you need to know about school finance and the school budget. And so, I think our goal is to, what is it, 146 pages? Is to try to condense that to three pages.
And a video.
And just cutting and pasting it mostly, and then, if you could do like a five-minute video, just going over like a three-page thing. You do such a good job of presenting the board with, here's where the money comes from, this is what it goes to, there's some money you have to use for this, other, others you can't. But we're trying to have that done by April. So, we'll get back to you.
But that's us, right? This is like school board.
This is board work.
Yeah, I know, but we're going to, we're going to get Mr. Carlson and some of that. I think it makes sense for school board members to determine what part of that book might be the most valuable for the community to hear, you know, as just lay persons. Ms. Workman?
Yeah, well, you had said that John does such a wonderful job explaining these things to us. I mean, you might not even have to make a video, just go back to one of those meetings, take the clip, take a couple clips, and you're done.
Done. Excellent. Okay, so, we'll get on that. And the other one is support the superintendent and other appropriate staff in creating and facilitating a community budget and finance advisory committee. And there's plans still to get community members to be part of an advisory committee for the district as we move forward. And that's coming.
There's going to be a general communication to the community.
Yes. Okay, so, that's where we are in our board goals. Any other conversation, comments, questions? Our third agenda item is 3.03, Community Survey Content Discussion. And Dr. Pecel, did you want to start this one?
Yes. So, Dr. Marvin, Director of the Board, as you know, our strategic plan calls for moving forward with an operating referendum in the fall of '23 or '24. Our budget strategy calls for that same effort. Of course, you have not, nor have we asked you to vote on that, in fact, because we have some homework to do before we have all of the evidence about how our community might respond to such a referendum. So, we are going to be conducting a phone survey with school election strategies. Dr. Don Lifto is our lead person, who's really one of the deans of school referenda, not just in Minnesota, but around the country. Amy Icke, working with Momsu Canudson, is coordinating this initial analytic effort to understand where our community might be around a referendum. Very briefly, I want to give a little information about the survey itself. And then, we're actually only asking for an initial board discussion on what I would call one of the three main components of the survey because the others are fairly set in terms of best practice. The phone survey will have about 40 questions, the vast majority of which will be prompts that are specific to something we want to find out about from our community. Two of them, though, can be open-ended. By the end of this, the firm will have conducted 500 completed interviews. The previous practice suggests that somewhat, to my surprise, the 40 questions take about 15 minutes on the phone. Back to our discussion of statistical significance, the 500 calls will result in a margin of error of approximately plus or minus 4.4%. That gets us to the 95th confidence level, back to what we were talking about. That gets us to the 95th confidence level, back to what we were talking about earlier. We'll have those calls in English, Spanish, Mung, and Somali. We're also going to be purchasing databases that allow us to get access to a diverse sample of our community for the purposes of those interviews. Our hope is to conduct the phone survey during the second half of November and the first, or the first week of December. And, so, what we wanted to do in talking with the Chair and Vice Chair tonight, is hear some board member direction on which of the priorities in our strategic plan, which are summarized on this snapshot document, which, by the way, is also drafted and is going to be improved before a final version is released. But which of the priorities on our strategic plan do we actually want to include in the survey as a test for what our community might want to invest in? The two sections of the survey that we're not suggesting we talk about tonight, because our consultant is suggesting these are really basic components of any initial referendum survey, are, one, how do people feel about Rochester Public Schools broadly? What's the orientation toward the district? And, two, how would they respond to the prospect of significant budget cuts in Rochester Public Schools? Because as board members are aware, if this referendum doesn't pass, we would have approximately a $20 million budget deficit to begin resolving, starting in 2026. So, those two are pretty, the questions are well-developed, and they're road-tested in many other districts. Again, how do people feel about Rochester Public Schools? How would they react to significant budget cuts? The second question is, which of our improvement priorities, because we can't ask about everything in our ambitious agenda, do we want to actually include in that survey? And as I was talking with Jean and Kathy, we suggested it might be helpful, though we don't have to vote with a firm decision, if we could end up having five. We're going to be working with Dr. Lifto and his team to develop the survey very soon, so that we can get it underway this fall. So, just to give you an example, and then I'll see if Amy has anything that she wants to add here, and then we'll turn it over to Jean to facilitate. The question that we would be posing, someone would be posing on the phone, would, tied to our, tied to our improvement agenda, would essentially ask someone, I want to find the actual language, I apologize, because I'm shifting between screens, be asking someone After they read the statement of what the priority would be, they would ask, would this increase or decrease your willingness to actually support an additional investment in Rochester Public Schools? And so, for instance, I'll just pick this one, because we've been talking tonight a lot about research and data. Number 12, launch a research office and data infrastructure that promote innovation and continuous improvement. I'll say I'm not recommending that one for the survey. But if he said, if Rochester Public Schools was going to launch a new initiative to create a research office and a data infrastructure that promote innovation, continuous improvement, how would this affect your willingness to vote for a referendum? So, those are the questions that we wanted to get board member reaction to. Which of these priorities in our plan do we think are important to test in this phone survey this fall? Amy, how did I do? I stumbled there a little bit in the, in the last...
Sure.
I actually had, I had teed up here exactly the way the survey was going to go, and then I clicked around, and that was my doom, so.
Yeah, I thought that was very thorough. I would just reinforce what you said about working with Don, he's done these, I would bet thousands of times, he teaches courses on it, he has literally written a book on school tax elections, so, I'm honored to work with him on this, and feel that we'll get some good data.
I actually, just give Amy a little time, and everything works out. Here, I found the prompt. Here's the prompt. "I'm going to read some statements about the proposal to increase the district's operating levy. Please tell me whether the information in each statement would make you more likely or less likely to vote for such a proposal." And then, they would read that proposal. So, Madam Chair, the question really is just for board members to have a chance. And let me just also say, I would encourage, if board members want to provide feedback on this after this survey, please reach out to Amy, because she can be our collector of ideas for this one, and she'll be, as I said, in the lead and working with the firm, along with Momsu in the design of it.
Thank you. You did a really good job. And Amy, thank you for taking questions afterwards, because a lot of us, after a meeting, think, "Oh, you know what I should have said," or "What I want them to know." So, what we're gonna do right now, and we won't take a whole long time to do this, is not what each of us think is the most important, what we want, but what do we want to know from the community that either they think it's a really good idea, or they're not too enthused?
I have a third question.
So, go ahead.
Number one, does it have to be just from this list? Because I think the list is a little specific.
You think the list is what?
A little specific, like, like, without a lot of explanation, people may not even know what it means.
Good point. Will the question explain, for instance, if it's deeper learning?
Yeah.
Will it get a brief explanation of that?
Yeah, we would use language that's accessible, for sure. If your question is, is there something not in the strategic plan that you want to test as an initiative? Absolutely, you know, propose that. Obviously, this is, this is our agenda that the board has voted for, and so that's why this would be our starting point for the initiatives that we'd be asking about. But if there's something else that you wanted to suggest we talked to the firm about including, we certainly could take that down.
I think a concern we had was, you know, if the question is, "Do you like the direction the district is going?", what does that mean? You know, if I'm ticked off that they're painting the lockers at my kid's school, well, no, I don't like the direction, because it's an ugly paint color. So, these are specific, but, you know, Melissa, as Kent said, if there's something else that's missing here, this isn't sacred, it's just, I think, gonna keep us on track a little bit more. So, anybody?
Can we share our thoughts tonight, if we want to?
Yes.
Just because we won't get back to it. I like the first three of the critical and compelling knowledge and skills, again, with a little bit of tweaking of the words, because I don't think people know...
Plain language.
Multitierred systems are. I understand it, but I don't think a lot of people do. And then, my thought was to just summarize the next two full categories. So, I think those first three are what the community really wants to know about, in my perspective, in that, but I also want to include positive, inclusive learning environments, but not the level of detail. So, I think that kind of answers Melissa's question. And the same thing about the effective and equitable system of supports, that just, a question about that topic, not the deepness of these multiple things in each category. But I do like the detail of the first category, because I think that that's something that people in the community will want to know.
Thank you.
Well, and I was gonna say a similar thing, just a more vague question on the categories, such as, you know, I don't remember the wording you said, but if you knew that Rochester Public Schools was going to increase focus on academic achievement, would that make you more or less, whatever the question was? Just very vague. I mean, I, I think we all know that what we're doing is putting a focus on academic achievement. But rather than trying to explain all these items and how they're going to increase academic achievement, that's, that's what the average person wants to know. Are we increasing our focus on academic achievement? Absolutely, we are.
Good point.
But we don't have to go into these details.
Good point, thank you, yeah.
I agree with having a specific question about academic achievement. I'm not, I, I'm not sure about the MTSS piece, because, although I do like the way the superintendent explains the, you know, the 85% should be well-served through the, through the core. I think the more we talk about that, the more people will sort of understand how it But the life plans, to me, is one that I really think, if we can describe a deliverable, if we can describe an outcome for every student with that life plan, I think that is something our community's been asking for.
And I think that relates to parents and non-parents in the district.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Workforce, yeah. I also think, I asked the superintendent this question, and he said, "Yeah, we're not there yet." Which one of these are really about money? And which one of these are about changing sort of how we do business and the strategies we use? And which one are about... If we, if we didn't have the increased revenue from a referendum, we would then have to prioritize, because we'd have to cut 20 million. So, I don't want to say, which one of these wouldn't you cut, but among this list, the superintendent's nodding, we would have to make some real decisions about, some of these things couldn't happen. But some of them still could, because they're not a money issue, right? It's a change in the way of doing business. So, when I looked at this, I was kind of trying to think about money issues. I think the, anything that has to do with transportation, especially as it might be influenced by the start time decision, I, I don't know if we pull out a separate question specifically related to transportation. If, if the, you know, if we were able to do this, but it cost us more money for transportation, would you increase the referendum? Because that's what we said last time, when we talked about the start times, that it was the busing issue. And then, the middle school activities strikes me as one where that would require an investment. And it's a revenue source we don't have now.
And to piggyback on that, I mean, I think those are the kinds of questions we're gonna need to be asking people. If you knew that we might have to cut athletics, the things that always appear on the budget cutting list, and by always, I mean, years ago. If you knew we were gonna have to cut gifted services, if you knew we were gonna have to cut seventh choice, if you knew we were gonna have to cut, and those things that, I mean, it's as simple as going back through the old books and looking at the things that previous budget committees have considered as cuts. And, and start getting people's, like you said, priorities. But I also think it helps get the word out there that these are very real possibilities. And as soon as you say the word athletics, you know, that's gonna create concern, or any number of, of the things on that list. So, that would be valuable to get reaction to right up front, because it will help the district's marketing plan as well.
And do those questions about if you knew we'd have to cut, does that go on this survey, or does that go on the next survey?
When will the next survey be?
Well, depending on how the board decides to move forward after this survey, but there would be presumably in the spring, a second, more detailed survey that would actually start to get to those forced choice options. And so, this would be helping us set the table for that, but would be at a more general level.
Ms. Workman?
I think, I kind of like your transportation example, but I think we have to be really careful that people don't think, "Oh, well, this is an enhancement to the budget," as opposed to, "We're gonna have to cut $20 million."
Does that mean, then, that some of that referendum money would be an additional, additional to that $20 million, like an enhancement to transportation? That would be number one. And number two is, if we say that, we might not be able to follow through simply because our, our other things be under control. It's not just money for transportation, it's bus drivers, for starters. The number of school buses that first student or whoever can, can provide. So, I think we just need to be real careful about how we, how we frame the question. I, I mean, I think you were probably just using that as an example of something, but, you know, well, you promised, you said if we voted for this, that everybody was gonna be able to start school at 8:30 in the morning. You know? So, we have to make sure that we're not even implying that as a given.
Because we wouldn't have gotten to that decision point...
Right.
Before the survey goes out.
This one, for sure.
Not this one, right. And Cabinet members, if you have anything to add here, because you're clearly critically important. John.
As, as the leader of technology, I have a very big concern about all the devices we bought with one-time federal funds to get us to a one-to-one district. So, I'm really interested in testing what people's reactions are to a technology levy or operating funds to pay for replacement devices in a couple of years.
And John, just understand, that's, that's separate than, that's a different type of referendum?
We actually could run a, what's called, a capital projects levy in addition to an operating referendum, could do them at the same time, but it could then just be dedicated, like, a technology ongoing funding stream.
Thank you. Thanks, John.
Mr. Brown?
And correct me if I'm wrong, I guess I thought, or was under the impression that the consultant had a responsibility in actually framing the very things we're talking about.
Yep.
And while it's useful to get this level of input from us, ultimately, and you, the central, our input will be provided to him, but ultimately, and I'm assuming it's to him, but ultimately, they will...
Yeah.
Submit back to us their recommendation.
Yes, I don't think, Director Barlow, that we'll have the timing to, like, have, like, the board won't need to take, we won't have time to take action, like, a vote on the survey, but we'll share a draft back with you for, yes, your reaction. They actually have a whole item bank that is very tested and developed, and so, we wanted to start with what are board members' priorities, but yes, we're paying for that exact expertise.
Ms. Workman?
One of the conversations that Director Amundsen and I have had at great length is, when you have someone who's coming from without, outside the community, even though they have all of this experience in working with other districts, do they, how well do they really know Rochester, in terms of what this community is? And I think that's where maybe some of our suggestions could come in, to say, "Well, you know, that, that might be your experience in, in St. Charles or Minneapolis, but here's, here's what we need in Rochester."
My, my big question is mental health.
Yep.
I have a, a hope and a gut-level feel that our community would respond very positively to enhanced support for student mental health, but I have no idea if that's true. I know we need to do it as a matter of our work, but I would really like to include a question on mental health, actually, student and staff, but the student piece, I'm particularly interested.
I struggled with that one, looking at that one, that I think maybe more student than, they probably, as knowledge of staff.
Yeah, I think you're quite right.
So important, but from a district perspective, but...
The category of Julie's concern is that, even if we got more money for mental health, are we restrained by, we don't have the resources to spend that on, right? We can't buy people if they don't exist.
Actually, Dr. Mamu and I had a really good meeting today with Connie Grimsrud on that, as we're kicking off that aspect of our strategic plan work. And I think the prospect of adding staff internally is one option. A more likely prospect is increasing our community partnerships, who actually provide the therapeutic support to our students, which we know emerged as an urgent need from our strategic planning process. That's probably a more realistic strategy than, there are some, we certainly have internal staff who play a critical role in that. They do not provide therapeutic supports. They provide, they, they could do screening, they could do group, they could do, so, that's one that I would be very interested, how do people respond to mental health in terms of a support piece?
Right, but I think the point is still well-taken, is, I mean, we're having maybe trouble getting people for mental health support, but this is a problem nationally. I mean, in these groups that, you know, where that is their focus, that is, you know, what they do. You know, how many mental health professionals are being trained in colleges who are available to do this? I mean, which is something we can't control. So, I mean, I think we have to make it clear in a survey or the final referendum, is that there are simply some things we can't control. But if we could have these resources, is it something they would support?
For those of us in the field, we see the need so clearly. My question is, does the public as a whole see that? I think you see the stories about skyrocketing emergency room visits for teenagers and things like that, and it's, it's a question for me, is how widely has that gotten out? It's a, that's one thing I'll be suggesting we, we include, because I...
I think it'd be interesting to break that down between parents and non-parents.
Good point.
I mean, we have 200 people on a waitlist for where I work, and that's not uncommon for other places. Like, I've had, I have had, now that I've moved into a different role, to cut back on people that I see clinically, because I can't do that in my new role. And so, to move someone and to, like, extend determination because they can't move on to another place is, you know, like, that's heartbreaking, and you don't ever want to say that. But I also, I mean, I, I have that same gut feeling, where, like, right now, mental health awareness in a community is much higher than it was before. The way that this is worded, though, is, "Mental health enhanced supports for students and staff struggling with mental illness." Everyone has mental health, but not everyone has a mental health disorder or a mental illness. And so, I think if we're thinking about, like, our student nutrition, that's about physical health, but also can be about mental health. So, there are things, too, that we, that won't necessarily result... that we, that won't necessarily result in a gigantic dollar increase in our budget if we are offering either resources or other things that we don't necessarily have to pay out of pocket for, like talking to families about like sleep hygiene. I mean, that, something simple like that can help both your mental and physical health. So, while I absolutely, like, I wish that people could go see a mental health professional, just like they would a regular care doctor. Like, I don't need anything, but I'm here preventative. Like, we don't do that in mental health, if you're using your, your insurance. Like, I have to diagnose you with something in order to fill your insurance. And not everybody has a diagnosable disorder necessarily. So, having to tell people, like, you can pay out of pocket and subvert your insurance. But I think that, I also wonder, though, if, like, parents of students, and maybe this is to your point, Karen, like, parents of students will recognize, like, I would much rather them get it where they are, because they're in the same place for eight hours a day. But other people will be like, why is that the school's problem? Can't, like, Family Service Rochester, or Riverstone, or Nystrom, like, why can't they either come in and provide that, or why wouldn't I do that on my own time? Like, people, I don't think that the, like, those two things are happening at the same space.
And I wouldn't even look at its convenience. It's that this is what's best for the kid.
Yeah.
Ms. Amundson.
So, in terms of more of those general categories, instead of being the specific, I mean, I think those of our school board members who are running for office right now could identify the hot button issues. Discipline, increased academics, mental health, just those, those larger, broader categories, I think, would be more meaningful to the people we're going to reach on the survey. The ones who aren't very, potentially very well-informed about what the school district even does. I think, again, simplifying or, because we don't have time to explain it to them on the survey.
Safety.
Safety, right. Safety's a better way of approaching discipline, but-
And I think, to, I guess, to your point, like, I think students will internalize all of this as, like, I want my school to be a one-stop shop. Like, I want to be able to get all of my needs met in this space, because that's where I am. Whereas, other people who maybe are a little bit removed from having been in school think, like, school is only for academics and education, and everything else happens outside of that. So, if there's a way for us, maybe broad categories, like what you're asking for in this first survey, is to broad category, like, test the water of where people are, and then ask them those very specific questions, I think that that might be a better use of our time. And I appreciate how Director Nathan is kind of, you know, like, what is the funding piece? Like, what means money, and what means systemic change, like, to increase services type of thing. But-
Maybe expansion of community schools.
Okay.
Because that's a cover-
Yeah. The students in community schools, people will know, like, one-stop shop. Like, I want to get everything here, which is great. And I would love to be able to provide that at all of our schools.
And that definitely has a price tag to it.
Right. But our community may not realize that those are options, or think of us as being the provider for all of these things.
And Chair Marvin, can I ask-
No.
-Mr. Carlson, a question. When we write the referendum questions eventually, remind us how specific we have to be in terms of you are voting for, and should, is it this survey, or is it the next survey where we're kind of drilling down to that language?
Yes. So, you're usually writing, there's some key things you have to have in there with, you are voting for a tax increase, and you put in a dollar amount. And that's kind of what the frame of the question is, or what the gist of the question is. But you have to, you can frame it a little bit with, kind of like, what, how the money would be used.
Yeah, you know, those, those dollar amount questions, though, are meaningless to the average person. You say 25 million, they're like, wow, that's a lot of money. It doesn't matter what number you're going to say, if they don't have context. A percentage of our budget, if we don't pass this, we have to cut X percentage of our budget, might be more meaningful.
But aren't there certain specific ways that language has to be written according to the state of Minnesota?
But not in a survey.
No, but that's what I'm saying. How do we, when do we ask the community-
Textiles.
The, well, the, the language that will tie more specifically to what they'll see-
You're saying next survey.
In the next survey. Okay.
I would maybe throw out, if I could, the question of access to early childhood, and whether that is a topic that we would like to measure the temperature of. Each community is a little bit different about their understanding of the value of that.
Well, and there's different kinds of early childhood. There's early childhood for students who are identified as needing additional support versus universal pre-K, which is what they may jump to, an assumption that we're talking about.
Access is more the general ed preschool-
Yeah.
-rather than the fee-based one, rather than the special education funded preschool. If that makes sense.
I have one more comment on the mental health piece, and this might take some work to, like, work to figure it out. But I would phrase it perhaps in the way of how many students' needs are not being met currently. And if we can fund this, you know, X number would be met.
Same. Okay.
I think we need to think about the average person not having really any background in the particulars of what we do.
And I, I think that's one of the things that Donald will be able to help us do with this, you know, with his expertise in getting that general public doesn't get education ease, education ease, national ease.
Edgespeak.
What you just said, edgespeak. Yeah, there's the thing. Okay.
Write it in English.
Great ideas here. Anything else? I'm taking notes. Kent's taking notes. Send notes. Amy, Amy, I'll send you these. But I think this is important. Anything else you want to share with the group before we close? All right, then. It is 7:07.
Seven or seven?
7:07, and we are adjourned.
Thank you.